Okay.
All right.
Much better.
You're just in time.
I'm not leaving you alone with the only one with a headdress on.
All right, everyone, I'm gonna admit everyone now. And once everyone's admitted, Audrey will let you know again.
Okay.
Okay, Audrey, you're set to go.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Welcome to the Monday, December 14th, 2020 Regular Planning Commission Meeting for the City of Burlingame. For all in attendance today, please note that this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube and will be uploaded to the city's website after the meeting. As a courtesy during the proceedings, we ask that you place yourselves on mute as sound transfers easily and can be disruptive. Please note that there are several ways for you to submit comments during this meeting. You may send your comments via email to publiccomment@burlingame.org. Staff will be monitoring emails throughout the evening and they will be read at the appropriate time. The length of the emailed comment should be commensurate with the three minutes customarily allowed for verbal comments. Secondly, you may also submit your comment using chat in Zoom by clicking on the chat button located at the bottom of your screen. Staff will then read the comment at the appropriate time. Lastly, you may raise your hand in Zoom by clicking on the participant button located at the bottom of your screen and then click Raise Hand. Members of the public who are participating in this Zoom meeting by phone can dial *9 to raise your hand. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Roll Call. The record should note that six members of our commissioners are present this evening. Do you note that Commissioner Loftus is absent? Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of Minutes. We have some meeting minutes to review and approve from the November 9th Regular Planning Commission Meeting. Are there any comments, changes, or discussions regarding these minutes? Let's see, I've lost everybody's little... Okay. Oh, I see Vice Chair Toronas. Do you have a question?
No, Madam Chair, I sent in some comments earlier in the day. I see that they've been picked up in the revised comments that were sent to us later in the afternoon. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised minutes for the November 9th meeting.
I'll second that.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Toronas, seconded by Commissioner Sargent. Any discussion on this motion? All right, now we have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Camerato?
Aye.
Commissioner Ball?
Aye.
Commissioner Sargent?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Chair Toronas?
Aye.
Chair Say?
Aye. So motion passes 6:00:01. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Staff does not have any changes to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And I have noted that we do have a few recusal, recusals this evening. Commissioner Gall is recusing from item 8C 722 Walnut Avenue. Commissioner Camerato is recusing from item 9A 812 Linden Avenue. And I, Commissioner Say, is recusing from item 8D 141 Victoria Road. Are there any other recusals to take note of? Okay, with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Public Comments, Non-Agenda Items. Members of the public may speak about any item not on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to suggest an item for a future Planning Commission agenda may do so during the public comment period. The Ralph Brown Act, which is the state local agency open meeting law, prohibits the Planning Commission from acting on any matter that is not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. A timer will sound at the end of the time. Please speak clearly into your microphone. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on an item that is not on our agenda this evening? Seeing none, I will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Study Items. Agenda Item 6A 822 Walnut Avenue. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site, or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? Okay, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, this is an application for conditional use permits and a rear setback variance for a new two-story accessory structure at 822 Walnut Avenue Zoned R1. The subject property is a through lot with furnitures on both Walnut Avenue and Arkway. An existing two-story accessory structure would be demolished to build the new building. The proposed detached structure totals 1,424 square feet. The first floor of the exact building would be used for as a two-car garage and the second floor would be used as a combination of several uses, including a recreation room, home office, and accessory living quarters. Since the proposed accessory structure is two stories in height, it is subject to setback requirements. While the building complies with side setback requirements, a request for a rear setback variance to the first and second floors has been submitted. A rear setback, and this is facing Arkway. A rear setback of four feet, three inches is proposed to the first floor and second floors, where 15 feet is the minimum required to the first floor and 20 feet to the second floor. Conditional use permits are also required for the use for the size of the accessory structure, for the plate line height, for the overall building height, and for having a full bathroom in an accessory structure. This concludes my summary of the staff report, but please let me know if you have any questions for staff.
All right, seeing that there are no questions for staff. In the public hearing, would the applicant please come forward, state your name, and add anything you would like regarding your project?
Hi, we are the applicants. This is my wife, Jordan. I'm Chris Chavez. We live at 822 Walnut. We moved here about a year ago now, but we've been residents of Burlingame for about seven and a half years. We have two young daughters. This is truly our dream home and our dream neighborhood. We have a, as you mentioned, currently a two-story garage in our backyard next to a pool deck and some outdoor space. Our goal is to enhance our property by, as you described, essentially building a new, a new two-story garage to replace the two-story, the current two-story garage. I'd love to have a home office to work from and in the, in the current environment is made that even more important. We'd like to have some recreational space for our children to complement the, the pool area that we have. We'd like to have a garage to keep both of our cars indoor at night, indoors at night. The, the current garage really only accommodates one of those and some, some shop space in, in the garage. The second floor of the proposed building would be on plain with the house. The slope of the lot would allow for that and the, I think our architects did a really thoughtful job and really working with our property to, to make it so that the, the roof height, I think, is about the same as where it is now to not intrude on our neighbors. And we, we included a couple letters from our neighbors on either side signing off on, on, on the proposed plan. We really just don't want to cannibalize our lot by putting in another single-story structure on there when we have this opportunity with the slope of the lot to do something on plain with the main house and, and really get the, the best of all worlds of having more functional space for our family. A proper garage compared to what's there now and, and, and keep our, our green space, keep for the outdoor space we have and the trees we have and, and hopefully just make our, make our dream house even more perfect.
Sorry, I was muted there. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant? Vice Chair Toronas?
Yeah, just one minor one. It's a detail and just, and I don't know if you've had a chance to interface with your neighbor on the right-hand side facing from Arkway. Just a simple question is, what, what's proposed between the steps and the walkways that's along the right side of the new structure? Between those steps and the property line fence, would that be landscaping? Is it a new fence or what's happening along that side?
So along that side, we are going to put a gradual sort of walk space that you can have as gradual steps that go up to the grade of the pool deck. And we wanted to make sure we had an accessible side for utilities and, and for, for access to, to the pool area from Arkway.
So is the fence along that side going to be rebuilt or is it just gonna stay as is?
Currently, the fence, I'm trying to think. Currently, there's, there's, the fence is, is at that, that high point. It's, it's up with the pool deck height. So there's going to need to be a retaining wall that runs along a portion of that as you get closer to Arkway.
Yeah, we've had a chance to talk with Gavin next door about that. There is a small sort of unlandscaped space there now that he would actually like to see landscaped. So I talked with him about that, if that's part of the plan, but he is happy with the division and he's reviewed the plans as well to see that, that burial will remain in terms of the fence that's there. And then, you know, potentially if there's a small amount of space for landscaping that he would be agreeable to that.
Okay, so it sounds like you've talked to him. That's good to hear. That's, that was my main question, main point. Thank you.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yeah, I understand that you've met the off-street parking requirement, but I was wondering if you looked at any ways to maintain at least some uncovered parking in front of the garage?
It's a, it's a great question. I'm sorry, I should, was there an architect here?
Oh, no, it's okay. It's okay. Um, yeah, you know, there's some complications. If you look at the site plan, you can see there that there's the pool deck that is at the, the back of the, of the proposed structure and that pool deck is a long curved retaining wall that basically divides the, the, the site from, uh, from elevation. I think it goes from like 56, six down, I think, six feet or so at that point, and it creates kind of a pinch point. So the only way that we could possibly create off-street, and then, and then there's also a retaining wall at Arkway as well. And there's a grassy area that's currently to the left of the house. It's, it's not level with Arkway. So if we were to try to create parking there, we would basically have to excavate, take out several trees and, and put in a driveway that was level with Arkway, which would be about six feet lower. Or even with the slope, it would, it would still be significantly lower than the pool deck. And we were trying to avoid doing that. We didn't want to take out any more trees. We didn't want to change the look of Arkway anymore than we had already. And, you know, we were also concerned about increasing the size of the curb cut because they're already increasing it pretty significantly for off-street parking.
So all those?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All those retaining walls are, are existing then?
So currently, the retaining wall that is to the left of the structure is set about four feet back from where we're proposing to put it. So we're gonna kind of push it out a little bit further. But yeah, there's a retaining wall there that runs along the left side of the existing garage.
Okay. And then, the existing driveway on Walnut, is that gonna be maintained or are you gonna be, be removing that?
No, we were. Yeah, maintained.
We're gonna keep that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Gall?
Yeah, um, so I, I, I get it that you're looking for two cars, but it's, but you're in fact building a three-car garage. So the third space, is that for a car also or are you saying it's more of a shop space?
It was actually for a car. And we had it actually as two shorter eight-foot garage doors. But there was a point where they thought we were going to require three off-street parking spots on that side. So we decided to make it a, a two-car garage combined with a one-car garage and we would intend to use it as a two-car garage and a one-car garage. The, um, the shop area that we're referring to is at the back of the garage. There's a little bump out on one side.
That bonus there, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Did you look at, at any designs where maybe you would, as opposed to having the two, let's say you went to a two-car garage or even a three-car garage. Did you look at any designs where you would not have all those garage doors in the same plane? In other words, if the garage stepped back to sort of work your way more towards those retaining walls? I mean, I, it just seems like you're kind of maxing everything out where you could get a two-car garage in there and still not have to have a, a rear setback variance. I know it wouldn't potentially give you that bonus area, but did you look at any of that, those kind of designs?
You know, we've played with a lot of different designs. As we said, there's a pinch point in the back. We were really trying to push it back as far as we could get it and then get it as far away from the street as we could. Um, you know, and we were also trying to maintain that same gambrel roof look. And one of the issues with, with keeping that sort of consistent look with the front is trying to maintain that sort of even front facade. So if we were to, to try to offset, like you're saying, like perhaps the larger garage or a smaller garage, maybe flipping them. And I think that we would have to really look at changing the, the overall aesthetic of the garage itself and maybe do a different style of roof or, or a different design.
Okay, um, so now this, this is just a practical question. On, on a, on an everyday basis, you know, you're dropping bringing kids home or dropping off groceries, coming back from the store. Do you park on Walnut or do you park on Arkway?
I'm gonna let the client answer this, yeah.
Yeah, currently, we keep, um, we park mostly on our driveway that comes in off Walnut. So the off-street parking referenced earlier, that's a driveway through the front of the house. We have a minivan that we park there for the, for the kiddos and everything else. We do not park on the street on Arkway. Sometimes we park on the street on Walnut. We also park one, one car in the garage currently, but the current garage does not fit the minivan. So that always parks either on Walnut's driveway or Walnut the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, so I have a, let's see, a couple of questions, I believe. In looking at the details on the front of the main house, you have some shutter details and planter boxes and such, and was wondering if you had considered adding some of those cute little design elements to add some character to both sides, the, the street-facing side as well as the side of the, this unit that'd be facing the house.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we've been cutting, taking them on or putting them on and taking them off and putting them on and taking them off. They, we actually had shutters on before we did the, that last garage iteration. But we're, we're absolutely open to maintaining as much charm as possible in keeping with the main house, which is very charming. And, you know, just keeping that consistent look of the property. There are currently, there, there are window boxes and shutters on the front and, you know, with beautiful maintained plants and it looks wonderful. So that is something that, you know, we would absolutely want to add to this, to this house as far as character.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any other questions? Do, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Did we receive any comments via email?
No emails and no chats.
Okay, with that, I will then close the public hearing. Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Sargent?
Yeah. And it's, I know we're not taking action tonight, but, um, I mean, I like the project. They're asking for a lot in terms of special considerations, but I think it's a pretty unique lot. And I think the one area for concern that I had was off-street surface parking. And it sounds like Commissioner Gall was kind of going in the same direction I was going on that one. But I think what's unique about this lot that kind of mitigates my concern on that is the fact that it had, there's another driveway on Walnut that's available for that, you know, kind of during the day parking. When there's, when there's not a space in front of the garage, I'm concerned that, you know, if you don't want to pull in the garage and you're blocking the sidewalk, so, but I have less of a concern in this area than that for this application than I would otherwise.
Commissioner Gall?
Yeah, um, so, yeah, I, I have some concerns about the size of this project. You know, I, I get it that the plate height would not be increased, but the, but the, the lower plate height would be brought further down. I think that it's gonna be such a broad face on Arkway. I, I think it's gonna look really obtrusive there. And, you know, kind of to my point about the parking, I, I don't see where there's a necessity for that much garage in the back of the property. You know, to me, it seems practical to park on the street or in the drive, the paved park in front of the house to, you know, on a daily basis. I mean, I know that, that's probably where I would park or my wife would park if we were to live there. You know, I get it, the, the desire for more space and you, you can go a little bit further with your lot coverage because you have a 10,000 square foot lot. But I think that if you got a little bit more creative with the garage, you could push it back so you don't have to have that variance. Because, because I'm kind of not seeing the hardship for the variance there. I mean, yes, there's a pool, but with some different looks on the design and, and, you know, bringing this down to a two-car garage, I think you can fit it in there nicely and it could be a, a project that wouldn't be so, so powerful on that street because, again, you're bringing it to four feet off of the property line. I think it's just gonna be a little bit too much.
And if I might ask, now, my understanding is that this variance is requiring that we have a 20-foot setback from the back. So to reduce the area back 16 feet would, would not allow us to build a structure in that area. Is there possibly a, a middle ground or an area of, of recess, recessing it back that you guys would find more acceptable than four feet? Somewhere between four feet and 20?
So Madam Chair?
Oh, sorry. So I've closed the public hearing and so why don't we listen to all of the other commissioners' comments?
Oh, sorry.
If necessary, we will open up the public hearing just to have this one question answered. Thank you. Vice Chair Toronas?
Yeah, thank, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Sargent. The, I, I think the, the project is a good project and I think that, yes, while, all the while they're asking for a number of considerations, it's similar to other projects that we've had before that the, the different use permits and the variants are kind of tied together, that, you know, once you consider a structure in this location, it kind of trips a requirement for these other special considerations. You know, sort of to the point of the architect and in regards to the rear setback, I don't, I don't see a way of pushing the structure back to a point where some sort of variance wouldn't be required. And so I think that the, there's difficulty parking on the street in the, in this location from what I've seen, just past experience on both of these streets. So I kind of applaud or, or like the idea of getting some additional off-street parking, quite frankly. So I think that the project has merit. I can, I can see the special considerations or the, the somewhat unique conditions, it just in terms of the existing site planning and the existing site conditions. You know, there's, there's precedence for us considering those issues in the past. So I think that the, I could make the findings for the, for the variants and for the use permits.
Commissioner Camerato?
Yeah, I agree with my fellow Commissioner to, to Vice Chair Toronas and Commissioner Sargent. I don't think that it, pushing it back, you're still, there's no way to, I think you can get out of that variance. I know that lot pretty well. I had seen the house when it was on the market and that pool is gonna get right in your way if you push it all the way back. And I, so I don't, there's no way around it. The, the, and I think that Ark, I think the property to the right also has like a two-story and I think, I think, so I can find the findings of how it would look similar. I'd hate, and, and one of the things that has come to fruition in these last couple months is all these robberies that are occurring. I think we can all see them on Nextdoor, car robberies. And I, I find that people are gonna really start putting their cars in their garage and lock them up or behind gates. Because right now it's going rampant. It's, it's also the holidays. So, you know, I would hope that you would use your garage as a, for your cars. But I know that probably during the day with the kids, you're gonna be in front of the house. But I could, I can, I would approve this project. I would ask that some of the items that Chair Say said with the shutters and kind of incorporating some of the really beautiful architecture from the front of the house, that you incorporate that into the garage.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yeah, I, I feel like I could support this project. This is a larger lot, unlike some of the other ones where we're getting ADUs in there and we're maxing out and going well beyond our FARs. So I, I think that they have a good-sized lot. I think that it is a unique location. There's an apartment building across the street. It's not to say that apartment buildings aren't special too, but the scale is already bigger across the street and there are several other garages that are on Ark as well. So it's a little different than being on one of our other smaller streets with houses on both sides. So I, I actually, I like the project. I think it's a good use of space and I'd like to see it move forward.
So I too would say ditto to what Commissioner Schmidt was just saying on a few of those comments. Looking out across that apartment structure is a pretty broad face elevation that this garage detached structure would be facing. And somewhat because it's a, a backside street, but there are houses with front entrances on that street. It almost makes for, it looks more like a house than a garage on that side. So I can see supporting this, you know, kind of tricky working with space. I know that part of your argument as well in the supporting documentation that you provided was that you have the ability to build multiple structures on the property, but to try to be cohesive and bring everything together in, in one structure was part of the, the strategy and the planning for this, this lot in this area. So I see that, I, I can see the findings to support this application and just wanted to repeat again to add some of those architectural enhancements. I think we just add some character to the structure. Commissioner Sargent?
I move we bring this back on the regular action calendar?
Second.
All right. So thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Sargent, seconded by Vice Chair Toronas. Is there any discussion on the motion? Oh, Commissioner Gall?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to add that, you know, to my previous comments. Yeah, I, I'd just like to add that, you know, to my previous comment before that, you know, they're asking for a variance on that rear setback. And yeah, there are houses on that street, but they are set back. And what we have in front of us is a structure that's 28 feet deep, which is much deeper than a regular garage. So even if they didn't meet the 15-foot setback, I think that this project, that the garage face should be brought back considerably from where it is and there is room to do it, should they choose to make the structure smaller. And just as another note, you know, they have, I can't, what's the 1,424 total square feet? There are houses in Burlingame total that are less than that. So this is going to be bigger than even some houses that we have or probably any of those apartments across the street.
That includes the garage, though.
Yes.
Which can be used for anything.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion? Yeah, we have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Camerado?
Aye.
Commissioner Gahl?
Nay.
Commissioner Sargent?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Vice Chair Toronas? Chair Sa?
Aye. So the motion passes 5101. And this action is not appealable. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 6B. 1868, 1870 Ogden Drive. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? Okay, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, the proposed project includes construction of a new 120-unit residential condominium building. The Planning Commission held an environmental review scoping meeting on November 12th of 2019 to identify potential environmental issues to be studied in the environmental document. At this meeting, it was initially assumed that the environmental review under CEQA would be a Class 32 infill exemption. However, during the preparation of the initial study for this project, it was discovered that the existing building was found to be significant under the California Register of Historic Resources Criteria in One, which is based on events for its association with United Farm Workers labor activism in the 1960s and 1970s and their decade-long struggle against the Teamsters. Because the project includes demolishing the existing building in order to build the proposed project, it was concluded that the project could no longer qualify for the infill exemption, but rather an environmental impact report or EIR would be required. On November 23rd of 2020, draft EIR for the proposed project was released for public review for a 45-day review period. The 45-day review period ends on January 11th due to the upcoming holidays in December. A Planning Commission public comment meeting is required under the CEQA statute and is intended to be an opportunity for the public and affected agencies to comment on the draft EIR pertaining to the overall adequacy of the environmental review and issues that may require further analysis. So this evening, the Planning Commission should take public comment on the draft EIR. This meeting is not a hearing to consider approval of the project, nor is it time to discuss the merits of the project. Once all comments are received at the end of the review period, a response to comments document will be prepared to respond to all the comments made on the draft EIR during this public review period. The response to comments document, together with the draft EIR, will constitute the final EIR for the project. And once the final EIR is completed, the commission and city council will hold public hearings to consider certification of the EIR and approval of the project. So this evening, a motion and an action is not required. I would first suggest opening the public hearing for public comments, if there are any, and then the commission can provide comments. Again, this is just on the draft EIR, not on the project itself.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Gahl?
Yeah, I just had one and I think it may just be a type of graphical error, but on the project summary on sheet four in our packet, the second, the second paragraph from the bottom, in the middle, it says three, in parentheses, five percent, three units, five percent would be below market rate. That's more than three, isn't it, for 120 units? Somewhere else in here, I think I saw six.
So we'll, we'll make note of that, Commissioner Gahl, and we'll have the project planner look into that and clarify that for you as it comes back.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we, will we be hearing from the applicant?
No, this is, this is just a time to take in any public comments. So no need to hear from the applicant or no presentation is necessary from the applicant. So we can just check to see if there's any public that would like to comment on the draft EIR. I will check the, there are no emails submitted and no chats submitted.
Okay.
Chair Sa, you can, I apologize, you can set a limit for this as well, just to make sure that each person gets an adequate amount of time, but that everyone is able to be heard.
Yes, thank you. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak on this item from the public. Okay. Looks like we don't have any questions from the public. So I will then like to close the public hearing and hear from the commissioners. Vice Chair Toronas?
Thank you. Well, I think as always, we have to consider carefully the various criteria for any historic or potentially historic structure, but, you know, that side, that said, for this one, we're asked to consider criterion A of historic events that, that took place with this, this building. And the way I look at it is, it, it, I don't think it's necessarily the, the building itself, the bricks and mortar that caused or contributed to the significance of the struggles of the, of the UFW. You know, the struggles, the history that would have occurred in whatever building the Teamsters chose to occupy, you know, wherever the Teamsters were, that's where the protesters would have gone. That's where the, the struggles would have occurred. So the building being demolished, in my mind, yes, we have to consider it in terms of, of CEQA, but it, it, it's the demolishing of the building, I don't think is necessarily going to cause us to, to forget or diminish the memory of Caesar Chavez and Boris Huerta or any of the you know, I, I, I look, for example, at the relocation camps in the San Joaquin Valley and the, they may not be architecturally significant in and of themselves as structures, but and, and they may not be iconic, but, but it's the actual wood and timber that, that is significant to the struggles of the relocated Japanese Americans. You know, but that's a little contrary to, to this case and, you know, and I, I'm, I'm sorry to drone on, but, but, and, and, you know, get detailed, but in my mind, it, it, again, it's not the specifics of this building that represent the struggles of the UFW and the, the difficulties between that organization, the protesters and, and the Teamsters. You know, so we won't lose that memory, we won't lose the memorability of, of that era because of the loss of this building, in my mind. You know, and that's, that's one opinion and I just thought, thought I'd express that just for the record. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Gahl?
Uh, yeah. No need to apologize about your droning on, Commissioner Toronas, we're used to it at this point. My, my questions actually have to do with the Utilities and Service Systems 4.3.19. If we go back to, if you go to 4.3, I'm, I'm sorry, and I'm in the, the draft environmental impact report. In the section on water, it says that Burlingame's average water demand between 2011, 2015 was about 76% of our allotted amount. And if you go further into that on page 4.3-126, under the Urban Water Management Planning Act, it says, "This plan is required to be updated every five years in years ending with O, zero, or five." "The UWMP must include a description of the reliability of the water supply and vulnerability to seasonal or climatic shortage to provide data for average single dry and multiple dry water years, as well as an urban water shortage contingency analysis." My point is that we've been approving a lot more housing over the last couple of years and I don't know, because I haven't seen or it doesn't appear in this draft, that there is a, a current urban water management plan and we're required to have one. So I think it would be imperative that we have that updated plan from the powers that be in the city so that we know where we are. I mean, we're, we're obviously in a drought and we don't know where we're going right now, but that's something to think about. And then still in the utilities area on 4.3-129, an electric power, natural gas and telecommunications facility, it says that existing electric, gas and telecommunications line in the city of the project would serve the project. However, they may be upgraded if necessary. The question is, are we, does this project get the, the, we have a new ordinance, if, if I'm not mistaken, that applies to this project also, that natural gas is not to be provided in here. So does that mean that this project or this building would be entirely electric? And if so, will the electric grid be able to handle the, the load of 120 units? And I guess I'm not necessarily even, I mean, I'm asking specifically about this project because we have it in front of us, but mainly because we've been approving a lot more housing and there's a lot of development going on in Burlingame. So I, I want to make sure that our grid can handle it, our water system and our sewer system can handle it. You know, and that, and that we're not overburdening the infrastructure we already have. Thank you.
Commissioner Camerado, did you have your hand up?
I did. My question is, and maybe this is more of a staff question, so understanding that the UFW occupied this building and as Commissioner Toronas mentioned, it's not particularly the building, but it's the entity that was there and the, the work that was done in the building. Is there some sort of remembrance monument or something that this, that the applicant is, and is this the place that we can actually request that the applicant maybe look at something like that to add to the memory of this location for the Teamsters, for the UFW?
Through the chair, I can answer that. I believe there is, my understanding is that there is a proposed monument or dedication. I don't know what the specifics or the details are of what's being proposed, however. I believe that's incorporated into the project and you'll see those details when it comes back for action.
Okay, great. Let's see, so I had one thing that I wanted to address with, I guess it would fall under transportation 4.3.17. Noting that there are four schools in the immediate area. Spring Valley Elementary, Mills High, both of those in Millbrae, and then on Truesdale and Casada, there's Franklin Elementary and Burlingame Intermediate. I'm wondering and, and, you know, have really some current concerns, I guess, of all the trucks and the movement of large vehicles during a very heavy part of the day in the mornings and in the afternoons when school is, you know, going into session and being released, as well as not only car movement and, and trucks, but pedestrian, very heavy pedestrian flow around this, all four sites at that time. So it was like a transportation plan. Transportation, where did I see that? A traffic control plan. If that would consider the aspects of the schools and, and all the, the numbers of people who would be on the roads in the morning and afternoons around beginning of the, and end of the school day.
Chair Sa, I believe.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Would you like to add something? Yeah, and if you can reopen the public hearing for them.
Yes, so I'd like to reopen the public hearings so we can hear from the project architect, Toby Levy.
Thank you. Yes, I did want to reinforce what Ruben had said that we actually had worked with Catherine, the planner, and we proposed a marker and we're redesigning our plaza. So in actuality, the T, the UFW and the Teamsters and the event will be actually great, more greatly highlighted than it is presently, since you would never know what happened there. So that, that from the start was our intention with our public plaza that we're creating.
Thank you very much. Any commissioners have any comments to that before I close the public hearing? Okay, I will close the public hearing again. Any further questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to, well, I guess that's it. This is a study item and there's no action to take and we will see this project come before us at a future meeting. So thank you. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, the Consent Calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine. They are acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by the applicant. A member of the public or a commissioner prior to the time of the commission votes, a member or a commissioner prior to the time the commission votes on the motion to adopt. So we have before us the proposed 2021, 2022 Planning Commission Agenda, Calendar. And would like to ask if there are any comments or questions about that amongst the commissioners. Seeing none. I'd like to move that we approve the 2021, 2022 Planning Commission Calendar, Meeting Calendar.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by myself, Commissioner Sa, seconded by Vice Chair Toronas. Is there any discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Camerado?
Aye.
Commissioner Gahl?
Aye.
Commissioner Sargent?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Vice Chair Toronas? Vice Chair Toronas? You're muted.
I was muted. Aye.
Chair Sa?
Aye. So the motion passes 6001. Moving on to Agenda Item Eight, Regular Action Items. Agenda Item Eight, A 1120 Cambridge Road. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site? Or do any commissioners want to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? Okay, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. May we have a staff report, please?
This is an application for a design review for a first and second-story addition to an existing single-story family dwelling at 1120 Cambridge Road, Zoned R1. The proposed project complies with all zoning code requirements. At the Planning Commission Design Review Study Meeting on November 9th, the commission had several suggestions for the applicant to consider. The applicant submitted a response letter and revised plans, date stamped November 24th, to address the commission's concerns. Suggested finding for designer view found on page three of your staff report. This concludes my summary. If you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to take those now.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. Will the applicant please step forward, state your name and add anything you would like regarding your project?
Hi, good evening. Jeremy and Christine Wilkinson here at 1120 Cambridge. We appreciated the comments and the reviews of our proposal last time. We thought that generally it was favored and, and we feel good about the project moving forward. The comments were thoughtful and it led to a, a further conversations and design discussions with our architect Gary Ahern. And we feel pretty good about our responses to that and some of the changes that we're looking to make and some of the things that we feel and some of the things that we feel even more confident about from the initial plans. So looking forward to more discussion of it tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. I will open the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, we're ready. I will ask if there are any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Do we have any emails?
No emails and no chats.
All right. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Do you mind if I add one thing real quick?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Sorry, I just wanted to add as well that our architect Gary is, is here as well to add any additional answers to any questions anyone has.
Wonderful. Thank you. And with that, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any comments? Vice Chair Toronos.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the changes that they made. I think that it helps along that driveway side. You know, the, the added bump out at the master bedroom. I think that that's going to articulate that a little bit. And I think the extended extending the belly band, you know, around that side. I think it, it also helps with that rear elevation. So I think it's going to, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to press on the issue of that, that window at the, at the banquet in the kitchen. I see the logic. I appreciate the interior views that they provided in the staff report. I think that helps with a clearer understanding of what they're trying to do. So I, I can see that it's been revised. Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt.
I agree with Commissioner Toronos 100% and I do appreciate the extra effort for the window study inside. And I agree with him that it, it's, it works. So I can live with that. So I'd like to see the project move forward. Unless there's any other comments, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
See, looks like Commissioner Camerato may have the comment. No, we'll hold that for a second. Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Camerato. Um, no, I'll second Commissioner Schmidt's proposal.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt, seconded by Commissioner Camerato. Is there any discussion on the motion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Camerato.
Aye.
Commissioner Goll.
Aye.
Commissioner Sargent.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
Vice Chair Toronos.
Aye.
Chair say.
Aye. So the motion passes 6001. An action by the planning commission is appealable to the city council within 10 days of the planning commission's action. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed or called up for review by the city council, by 5:00 PM on the 10th day, the action becomes final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing and must be accompanied by the appeal fee of $1,075, which includes noticing costs. Congratulations. Moving on to agenda item 8B, 108 Channing Road. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site? Or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? Seeing none, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. May we have a staff report, please?
Second here. This is an application for design review for a new two-story, single-family dwelling and detached garage at 108 Channing Road, Zoned R1. The proposed project complies with all zoning code requirements. At the planning commission designer review study meeting on November 9th, the commission had several suggestions for the applicant to consider. The applicant submitted a response letter and revised plans, date stamped December 2nd, to address your comments. Suggested findings for designer view are found on page three of the staff report. This concludes my summary of the staff report and I'd be happy to take questions of staff if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Will the applicant please step forward, state your name and add anything you would like regarding your project?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Kevin Pang and I'm one of the owners of the house. And we were in the hearing last time and we appreciate the comments from the commission. And one of the comments told us to talk to our neighbor at 210 Bayswater. So we actually spoke to them and about the 22-inch redwood tree that was going to remain on their property. So, and we also spoke to our arborist and he told us that if we followed the arborist's report during construction, there should be no issue with the, the tree. We might have to trim some of the branches overhanging onto our property. But overall, he's okay with the construction.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Uh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're seeing if there's any questions for you. Commissioner Goll.
Yeah, I just had one question. The elevation, I don't think this was there before, but you have porcelain tile as a facing material on your porch on the front and the back is, could you describe that? Or I'm, we're used to seeing some kind of a facing stone or a brick. I'm not used to seeing a porcelain tile. In my mind, that brings up an image of a bathroom tile or something shiny.
Yeah, we weren't sure last time and we actually proposed a stone. And then we spoke to our designer and I spoke to my wife and we kind of liked the porcelain tile look. And our designer told us that it's actually a good idea in terms of the, the waterproofing because porcelain is actually more moisture resistant and it's hard and it's pretty well suited for exterior use. And we looked at some porcelain tile in the shop and thought those actually look pretty nice.
So what would the, what would the porcelain tile look like, let's say, as far as color and finish and sheen and that type of thing?
It's kind of on, the, the color would be light, kind of like white. Maybe like vanilla type. We looked at a few. And they, they kind of look nice. When we got the sample.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yeah, actually, I have the same comment. I'm concerned about the porcelain tile and then how that goes in with the other colors and finishes that you're proposing for this. So I, I would, I think that we should be seeing a sample and, you know, a color board with the colors in the tile. Cause it could go very right and it could go very wrong. I, I think that we should be looking for that. Thank you.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yeah, I had a couple of detailed questions on the exterior. The main one was, it's not called out, but is the front door height six foot eight inches?
That's correct, yes.
And you're going to have nine-foot ceilings on the interior, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, because typically when you have a nine-foot ceiling, you'll see an eight-foot front door and eight-foot interior door. So just wanted to make sure that's what you wanted. And I see you've specified simulated divided lights for the windows. Have you picked a, not that we're specifically interested in the window manufacturer, but have you picked a window material?
Yes, we went to the shop and we looked at two that we had in mind. One is Milgard and one is Marvin. I think we learned leaning towards a Milgard, but we haven't got a, an actual quote from them. So I think 90% we're going to go with a Milgard.
Okay, so. Okay. And then I noticed on the, the window trim, you've specified three-inch window trim on the side. Is, is that really correct? Is it going to be two and a half inches wide?
I think it's actually three inches.
Okay, because I mean, the standard building convention is if you say three inches, it's actually going to end up being two and a half. Yeah, okay. All right, those are the questions I have. Thanks.
But I believe that's all the commissioners' questions. Is anyone in the public, would anyone from the public like to speak on this item or ask questions? Do we have any emails or?
Yeah, while you're waiting for that, we have no emails and no chats.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments? Commissioner Goll.
Yeah, I, I think that the changes that have been made, I mean, I, this was, this project was close last time around, but I think it's very close this time. However, I, I have a concern about that porcelain tile. I could see this moving forward if maybe that was brought back as an FYI prior to its application at the areas indicated on the plans. So I don't, I think that that can be, that they can move forward with that in mind. The other concern that I have from the applicant's response was the windows, I would be very careful with the, the Milgard window that you don't pick a vinyl window, which we typically do not approve. The Marvin is going to be much more in line with what the commission as a whole has been looking for. And that's just, you know, something that I think the applicant should be made aware of.
Sorry.
Sorry, the public, the public aspect of the hearing is closed. So we're just listening to commissioners' comments as it's fine. Commissioner Sargent.
Yeah, just to follow on what Commissioner Goll said. I'd, I'd recommend the applicant speak to staff about the windows and get more direction from them in terms of what we're looking for. And I'll be honest, I, you know, I'm concerned about some of the smaller details of the exterior on this. And, and I mean, I think overall the massing and articulation is good. But I mean, some of the details that we've brought out, I think the, the tile, that doesn't really, I mean, we'll see what is actually proposed. Because I think it sounds like at the minimum, we're going to be asking for an FYI for some kind of material sample. But, but yeah, it, the door size, that, that doesn't feel like a typical detail to me. So what's going to actually happen may be different than what's on this plan. That, I mean, if the window trim is really a one by three on the leg, that just feels like it isn't really going to support the, you know, the typical richness and detailing we see on a project like this. I, I understand that the columns have been made bigger, but they don't, they still don't feel quite in proportion to me. But I'd be interested to hear what others think. And, and, and I'm not, and it, the, they definitely did what we asked in terms of the chimney. But I, I, I almost like the, the original one better. So I just, you know, as we've said many times, the devils are in the details. And I'm, I'm not sure, and I'm not feeling really comfortable of how the details are laid out on this.
Commissioner Schmidt.
I actually really agree with Commissioner Sargent. I think that some of the details that are being called out are going to change or should change for constructability and the way things typically get done. I would agree with the size of the door. I think the elevation has improved since the last time we saw it. Because I think the last time the door even was shorter and out of scale. I, but I do, I do agree that with the windows being so high, the door does look dinky. And they might reconsider some of these finer points of detail to bring in a bit more scale. I definitely feel strongly about the porcelain tile and seeing a finish board come back to us at some point with this. Thanks.
Commissioner Camerato.
I agree with Commissioner Sargent. I do think we need to see a little bit more detail on this project.
We would like to make a motion and move that we continue this project. Commissioner Sargent.
Yeah, I'll, if, I'll second the motion only for purposes of discussion. But I, I actually, I'm, I mean, maybe this should have happened in the last go around. But I kind of think this needs to go to a design review consultant. And, and that's not typical after the second meeting, but I just don't, I feel it will move a lot more quickly for the applicant and will end up with a product that's more approvable and more likely to be built as approved if we, if we go that route. So I, I can't support that motion. Even though I seconded it.
Well, I'll withhold my, withdraw my motion. Would you like to make a new motion, Commissioner Sargent?
Sure. I, I move we refer this project to a design review consultant.
Okay, I'll second that motion. So is there any discussion on this motion? Commissioner Goll.
Yeah, just for clarity for the applicant, I suppose, and, and maybe for myself too. We're talking about three things, if I'm not mistaken. And that's the height of the front door, the window trim and the porcelain tiles. Are there any other areas of concern? If that's all it is, I don't know that it's worth going to the design consultant.
Well, I'm, I'm also, I would like the, the chimney looked at again. I, I, I think the columns could use a second look. They, they still feel out of proportion to me. And, and I think all the exterior trims need to be called out for dimensions so that we make sure that the builder knows what has actually been approved and he can actually build it. I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it'd be a, a long design review consultant process, but I, I think these details need to be hammered out.
Vice Chair Toronos.
Yeah, I, I can support the motion, especially with that last comment that Commissioner Sargent made. You know, knowing, knowing with a little bit more clarity, what is going to be, actually be built for both the builder and for planning staff with this moving forward for what's approved? Because I can easily see, you know, they call out three-inch painted exterior trim and then somebody uses either a one by three or, or, or something else. And then staff has to decide, is a two and a half inch trim, does that meet the criteria that was put forth with? Because that could look substantially different. I know we're talking about only a half an inch, but that, that could look really different versus, you know, what, what you're, what you would presume is going to be included, especially with that large head trim that they've now put. So because of that and some of the other comments that Commissioner Sargent made, I can support the motion now.
Commissioner Schmidt.
You know, I think that in just something through the set, you know, we don't really have the traditional sections through the, you know, windows and the details for that trim either. So again, I agree, it could be very misleading downstream as to what's approved and what needs to be built. So I, I, I think more detail needs to go into this set for us to approve.
And I agree with what Commissioner Sargent said, that it doesn't need to be a big design review meeting. It's, it could be all probably addressed in one brief meeting, but probably advisable to have another look. So we have a motion by Commissioner Sargent, seconded by myself, Commissioner Saaved. If there's no further discussion on the motion, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Camerato?
Aye.
Commissioner Gall?
Aye.
Commissioner Sargent?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Vice Chair Toronas? Chairsay?
Aye. So the motion passes six, zero, zero, one. We will now, let's see, is this one? There's no appeal.
No appeal since it got referred to a consultant.
Yes. So we will move on to Agenda Item 8C, 722 Walnut Avenue. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site? Or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? I do have noted that Commissioner Gall is recusing from this item.
Thank you.
And the reason is because he's the builder on this project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. May we have a staff report, please?
Just give me one second here. This is an application for a design review, special permit and site setback variance to replace an existing attached garage with a new attached garage at 772 Walnut Avenue, Zoned R1. An application for designer view and front setback variance for a first and second story addition to the house was approved by the planning commission in March of 2018. Construction of the project was completed in December of last year. At that time, existing attached one car garage remained. Due to poor condition of the existing garage, the applicant is now proposing to rebuild the existing attached garage in the same location and with the same footprint. Existing left side setback to the attached garage is non-conforming, measuring three feet, one and a half inches at the front corner and two feet, six and a half inches at the rear corner, where four feet is the minimum required based on this lot width. The applicant is requesting a left side setback variance to allow the new attached garage to be built in the same location as existing attached garage. At the planning commission meeting on August 24th, the commission continued the application, directing the applicant to look at alternatives to the garage location and left side setback for the proposed garage. The applicant submitted revised plans, date stamped December 1st, to address the commission's suggestions and opted to reconstruct the garage in the exact same location and footprint as the existing garage. Suggested findings for designer view, special permit and variants are found on pages three and four of your staff report. I would like to note that a received after letter was submitted by Mr. and Mrs. Winkle, which was provided to you earlier today. This concludes my summary of the staff report. I'd be happy to take questions of staff if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. During the original or the reconstruction of the house or the remodel, was the pantry and the mudroom already part of the garage space? Or was that a change made during construct, during the remodel? That's a good question for the applicant or the architect. Hold those details, but yes, let's hold until the applicant's ready to speak.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing now. Would the applicant, please come forward, state your name and add any comments that you would like regarding your project.
Hi.
Sure. Oh, go ahead. You start, Jessica. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jessica and I'm the architect for the project, the house originally, and now the garage and the ADU in question. After our meeting in August, we took those comments back and we decided to go back to the original garage design that was already mentioned here. As for the ADU itself, it, it has the same footprint as it did in August. And the only changes, there were some interior reconfigurations, so some windows and doors changed to reflect that, but the walls facing the adjacent neighbor remains the same as in no openings, windows or doors facing the direct adjacent neighbor. And, and to answer the commissioner's earlier question about whether the pantry and the mudroom were in the original proposal, they were part of the application as part of the first and second story addition, they were new spaces in the garage. And they were approved. And I will pass this to the homeowner Vivek, who's on, on as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just be really brief. Thanks to everyone in the commission for reviewing this. Just to recap from our perspective, we, as was mentioned, we were hoping to originally expand the footprint of the existing garage, which, you know, post the meeting, I think Commissioner Sargent in particular had real concerns about expanding the footprint, given its expensive sensitivity. And discussion was, you know, not deal from our perspective, but risked it and well received. And I don't remember the three specific folks, but the three, there were three commissioners that specifically recommended or suggested they would be supportive of replacing the existing structure as is. But I think there was a lot of just apprehension and discomfort around expanding the sizes we had hoped to do. So basically, we have frankly just taken the commission's recommendations from the last meeting to manage the utility and safety of the space and the garage without, you know, completely trying to spend a lot of money and redesign something that would, you know, be costly and time consuming. So in conclusion, all we're really doing is listening to the commission's guidance from the last meeting, which is going forward with kind of support we seem to have, just rebuild the exact same structure we have so that it looks nice and not, you know, not fitting with the, the existing curb appeal and so that it's safe as well, just given the dilapidated structure. But that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions for the applicant? I have a question, a clarification question. Vivek, I think last time you were, at the last meeting or prior to the last meeting, I had met with you and we took a look at your garage. That front face, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That front face of the garage looked to be closer to at least a fence. It may not be the property line, but a fence that's currently there, I guess, between you and your neighbor to the left. Is your property line beyond that fence line?
I don't know the answer to that. Jessica, would you know?
I'm taking a look at the survey one more time, just to look at that area. It looks like the fence does not follow the property line perfectly. It does meander onto the neighbor side, but also back on to the 772 Walnut as well.
Okay, yeah, that's where I think I'm, I'm a little bit confused, because the, in your plans, it looks like a good four feet or so away, that the front face of the garage is a good four feet away from the property line. When I saw it in person, it looked like it was closer to that. And then you just said that the fence meanders in and around the property line. So I'm, I'm just not clear if, where the fence is now, if that is, if we're going to be farther away from that, closer to it, and if that fence may be actually sitting or your property line is beyond that current fence line.
So the current survey, and this is where we're proposing that corner, the front corner of the garage, is at 3.1 feet for the survey.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, but Commissioner, we're literally trying to change nothing from the existing structure. All we're trying to do is just rebuild the existing structure the way it is.
Okay, you will stake it to the same location as it is now.
Yes.
Won't shift anything.
Correct. Yeah, literally, it's just, to be honest with you, I'm worried that like, it's not safe and I don't want someone to get hurt. I mean, the thing is, Mike, who's reclusive himself, would tell you that it's not a safe structure. And we were hoping to optimize it in the last meeting. That was rejected, non-appellable. We respected those comments. And so now we're just saying, you know what, it's fine. Let's just literally rebuild it exactly the way it is so that it's safe. And frankly, it looks terrible. And I know my neighbors hate it, as do we. It looks terrible for the street. So we're willing to just redo it so that it's safe and optically it looks pleasant to everyone in the community. No other changes of any kind.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Would anybody from the public like to speak on this item? Do we have, other than the received letter, are there any other emails?
No emails and no chats received.
Okay, great. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, I can totally appreciate what the applicant is trying to do in all. And I appreciate the desire to make it safer and all of those things. My challenge, as I read through the report, is that this was originally a garage built without a permit and in the wrong place. And then we extended space into it, making it even tighter, when we could have made a decent garage without the mudroom and the pantry in it and respected the four foot setback line. So I struggle then putting forth something else that is going to last another 50 years in non-conformance, when we had, we have other opportunities to do something that is conforming. And then as noted, that, you know, it is an objection by the neighbor as well, which I think we have an obligation to have some respect for as well. So as much as I appreciate what we're trying to do here, I, I would like to see a better solution that respects the neighbor's setback and, and, and deals with it. I mean, there is, there's, I understand the desire to maximize space and take advantage of that side yard, but there is a significant amount of rear yard. And the majority of us have garages in the back third. So I, I would like to see us relook at a better solution. Thanks.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that assessment. I, you know, I definitely, my default place in things like this is, is, you know, how can we help the homeowner maximize their, their property and, and make it safe? And, you know, I've given this one a lot of thought. And, and I think what I'm struggling with is, you know, the findings that we need to make for a variance. And particularly as Commissioner Schmidt pointed out, you know, the, one of the toughest questions always is what makes this lot unique from other lots in the area? And, and I'm, I'm having trouble making that finding and, and to bring a, yeah, I'm having trouble making that finding.
Vice Chair Toronas?
Yeah, thank you. I, I looked at the existing conditions and, and I find it hard to believe that those existing conditions are, are new. The, the structure has been there for some time, clearly and obviously. We've had, we have other structures, other, other buildings that are, that are either grandfathered in or we are allowed to consider as existing conditions as exceptional circumstances. They're asking to rebuild the garage in its current location. I don't see how that would be a detriment per se to other properties. So I can support the, the project and make the findings for the variance the way that this is submitted.
Commissioner Camerato?
I actually agree with Chair Toronas. I, I think that I can support a garage in the same location that it was, that it is now. And it wouldn't change. I mean, I think that structure has been there probably a really long time. So I would agree to move this along.
Yeah, I struggle with this one myself. But in, in the absence of the, an approval to rebuild it as is, it will just remain as is. And then it would be potentially dangerous and fail at some point. And wouldn't ordinarily support this project, I mean, this proposal. But I feel like we're kind of pinned in a corner here. And, and likewise, it seems the homeowner is too. So having to set aside my thoughts on the aesthetics of this garage, the, the shape of it, the difficulty in parking in it, I can see supporting it to move forward as well. Commissioner, Vice Chair Toronas?
Yeah, so, okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve, accept the design review for the attached garage, the special permit for an attached garage, being that there is precedence, particularly with this structure itself, and for the side setback based on the findings suggested in the staff report for the existing conditions.
I would second that.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Vice Chair Toronas, seconded by Commissioner Camerato. Is there any discussion on this motion? Yeah, we have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Camerato?
Aye.
Commissioner Sargent?
Nay.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Nay.
Vice Chair Toronas?
Aye.
Chairsay?
Aye. So the motion? Does it pass at three? It does?
Yes.
Okay, three, two, zero, one.
Three, two, one, one.
Three, two, three, two, zero, one. Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry. One recusal, sorry. That's where my numbers were all off here. Okay. So three, two, one, one. Sorry about that. Sorry, Commissioner Gall. An action by the planning commission is appealable to the city council within 10 days of the planning commission's action. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed or called up for review by the city council by 5:00 PM on the 10th day, the action becomes final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing and must be accompanied by an appeal fee of $1,075, which includes noticing costs. Congratulations. Now we'll move on to Agenda Item 8D, and I will be recusing myself for business reasons.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 8D, 141 Victoria Road. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site or any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. Can we hear the staff report, please?
This is an application for a design review for a new two-story, single-family dwelling and detached garage at 141 Victoria Road, Zoned R1. The proposed project complies with all zoning code requirements. At the Planning Commission Designer View Study Meeting on November 23rd, the commission had several suggestions for the applicant to consider. The applicant submitted a response letter and revised plans, date stamped December 9th, to address your comments. Suggested findings for designer view are found on page three of the staff report. This concludes a summary of the project, and I'd be happy to take questions for staff if you have any.
Thank you, Ruben. Are there any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing with the applicant. Please come forward and state your name and anything else you would like to add about your project.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Lauren Lee from Insight Design.
This is Lauren Lee from Insight Design and I am representing our client, Mr. Yun Feng Kai, the owner of 141 Victoria Road. Based on the previous meeting, we've addressed the rear neighbor's comments regarding privacy by proposing a row of trees along the rear property line as well as some potted trees on the second floor terrace. If you could refer to the revised landscape plan, L dash one shows the location of those trees and L dash one point one showing the sightlines from the rear neighbor's house. Note that the trees along the property line, when planted, will be eight feet tall and will grow to eight, excuse me, and will grow to 15 feet. Any questions at this time? I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioners, anyone? Going once, twice? Okay, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Raise your hand. Ruben, any submitted questions via email or in the chat room?
Uh, there were no emails and no chats submitted.
Okay, Lauren, do you have any further comments or anything in summary?
Um, not at this time.
Okay. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the public, that the public refrain from comments or questions while the commission deliberates, please. Commissioners, comments? Participants, hold on. Commissioner Camerato?
Yes, I um, I like the changes. I like the project. Um, I appreciate the trees in the back. Um, and I could say that uh, I'd like to put this as an approved project. I love it.
Okay, um, holding that for a second, Commissioner Schmidt?
No, I, I was going to agree and I'll second.
Okay, so we'll say, Commissioner Camerato, can we accept that as a motion?
Uh, making a motion to approve uh, 141 Victoria as per the staff report.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Camerato to approve, seconded by Commissioner Schmidt. Any comments on the motion, please? Anyone? Come on, I only get Okay, Ruben, maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Sure, Commissioner Camerato?
Aye.
Commissioner Goll?
Aye.
Commissioner Sargent?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Acting Chair Toronas?
Thank you, aye. Okay, so the motion passes five, zero, one, one. Any action by the commission is appealable to the city council within 10 days of the planning commission's action on December 14th, 2020. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed or called up for review by the council by 5:00 PM on December 28th, 2020, the action is final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing to the city clerk and must be accompanied by an appeal fee of $1,075, which includes, includes noticing costs. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey. Hey.
Thank you, Vice Chair Toronas. We are now moving on to um, agenda item number nine, design review. Study items, agenda item nine A, 812 Linden Avenue. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners want to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? And yet I have, yes, Commissioner Camerato, you are recusing.
For um, business reasons.
Great, thank you very much. Do any other commissioners have anything to note? All right, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. May we have a staff report, please?
Sure, this is an application for a conditional use permit for reemerging lots and design review for construction of a new two-story, single-family dwelling and detached garage at 812 Linden Avenue, Zoned R1. The project site is a single parcel that consists of two legally subdivided lots. Lot 22 is located at the right side of the parcel with an address of 812 Linden Avenue. Lot 21 is located at the left side of the parcel with an address of 816 Linden Avenue. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing shed that straddles the shared side property line and build a new two-story, single-family dwelling and garage at 812 Linden Avenue. The existing house and detached accessory structure at 816 Linden Avenue, the property next door, uh, will remain and only minor work is proposed to the structures on this lot as part of this application, uh, including converting the accessory structure back to a garage, which would be, provide the required parking for the house at 816 Linden Avenue. Uh, the project was reviewed by the commission on November 12th of 2019 as an action item where the commission voted to continue the project, noting that they could not make the special permit findings for the proposed attached garage at that time. The applicant submitted their project to eliminate, um, sorry, the applicant submitted a revised project to eliminate the attached garage um, and went to a second action meeting on December 9th of 2019. And at that time, the commission expressed concerns with the massing of the house uh, with the tall two-story walls in the large flat area on the roof. The commission continued the project so that the applicant could redesign the main dwelling to address the massing concerns. Uh, due to the changes made to the project since, it is being brought back to you as a design review study item tonight. Uh, this concludes a summary of the staff report. I'd be happy to take questions of staff if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Uh, Vice Chair Toronas?
Thank you. So Ruben, is there anything relative to 816 that's before us or within our purview this evening, or is that's all being processed separately? Is that correct?
Correct. Um, there are some changes that are required. As I mentioned, the existing accessory structure needs to be converted back to a garage. I believe there's a bay window and a portion of the porch that needs to be adjusted so that a driveway can be placed uh, along that side of the house. But that is going to be, be taken care of ministerially tonight. You're just reviewing 812 Linden Avenue, the proposed new house. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Uh, with the applicant, please step forward, state your name and add anything that you would like regarding your project.
Uh, good evening. Uh, it's Timmerdean, it's a project designer. Uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Um, this has been a, a, a long, a, a, a long slight, slight struggle with this property. Um, I think we've done a good job redesigning it. We have um, worked on the massing. We still have the, the large pitched roofs, which we're accustomed to um, with my designs. We have uh, d- done a few things to create the, the illusion of openness, which is a- as normal when people build new houses, they um, use the four-foot setback where we're actually on the far left side giving us some extra room. So that will help um, with the massing and it also help with the existing um, 816 Linden because it does have a very minimal driveway. So um, other than that, um, we're looking forward to your comments. I'd like you to um, take a little bit of uh, of um, a little bit of pity on the 3D. The front elevation of the 3D is a little off. Um, I'd like you to just concentrate more on the 2D, but um, as you know, in the past, I've always used a lot of 3D to kind of give you the visualization of, of what's happening. So um, my apologies for the front. Um, it's a little bit off the, the windows to the um, where Ruben, uh, Ruben, if you could put your cursor to the left side uh, second story windows, the ones in the middle right there, that, um, that little dormer is a little off, as you can see from the 2D elevations. And I can fix that um, as an FYI um, on our next meeting. And I'm open for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? All right, um, no questions? Would anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Did we receive any emails or chats?
Uh, we did not receive any emails or chats.
All right then, um, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments? Commissioner, Vice Chair Toronas?
Yeah, I think it's a nice project. I think it's, um, it addresses the issues that we were sort of focused in on uh, when before us before. Uh, it's fairly straightforward in terms of the entitlements, conditional use permit. It's fairly obvious it has to be processed in order for this lot to reemerge, which I think is commendable to, to do something with this vacant area. And from a designer view standpoint, I can make the findings. Seems to be well crafted, well detailed, nicely scaled. So I think the project should move forward.
Commissioner Goll?
Yeah, I, I'm still having some problems with the design. Um, I'm, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Toronos about the reemergence of the lot line, but to me, this, you know, this street is mainly single-story homes. There are some two-story homes. And I'm not saying this should not be a two-story home. It's just the massing of it. To me, it's going to be the biggest house on the block, in my opinion. You know, we've got things like your, your front setback on the first and second floor have a difference of five inches. Uh, to me, I, I think that that is contributing to the, the, to the massing that we've got going on. And it's the same as I look at, like compare the first and second floor plans. They're almost the identical amount of square footage. And, and so what, in my opinion, what it looks like to me is there's walls that are almost stacked on top of each other with a little bit of gingerbread or a little kick out of a roof that's trying to hide those those sheer walls or those, or those vertical faces. And I, I, and again, I, you know, I'll go back to my comments from the previous meeting. I, I really don't think that the way to solve the, the height issue of a steep roof is to cut it off in the, in the, at the peak and, and make it flat in the middle. I mean, I'm looking at the roof plan and to me, it would be a kind of a nightmare to frame it, but I'm obviously not going to be building it. But I, I just, I just don't see where this has, the massing has been solved properly for this, uh, for this block. Again, I, I, it's a, it's a, it's a block of smaller homes, many um, single-story homes. And even the two-story homes that are there are broken up a little bit more in the, in the upper floors, seem to be smaller than the lower ones.
Any other comments, commissioners? Commissioner Sargent?
Yeah, I um, yo, I really thought that the um, the uh, the 3D rendering of the of the front was, was nicely handled. I'm not sure if that's the original or, but it, it just seemed, I, I agree with Commissioner Goll's comments. I guess I should start with. And it's, it seemed like the that the um, 3D was, was better handled. So I, I still think it um, needs some more work.
Commissioner Schmidt?
You know, when looking at the design itself, on the page and seeing the 3Ds, I, I liked what I saw. And it's not atypical from what you, what, what he does. But then kind of looking at the, at Google Earth again, and the surroundings, I can appreciate Commissioner Goll's and Commissioner Sargent's opinion on the scale. There are, there are some two-story homes there and some massive ones, but a lot of smaller ones too. But I think that that over time, they're all going to be getting to their maximum FARs. And um, I think that overall, the project looks good and I feel like I could support it.
Vice Chair Toronas?
Yeah, sorry to recomment, but I, I, I just have to say, you know, I don't necess- I don't disagree with Commissioner Goll in terms of, you know, resolving the height via these, the flat roofs. But, you know, that said, however, the only thing before us is the conditional use permit, permit, which I think is a no-brainer. And design review. And I look at the articulation that we're seeing on the, on the four sides of this, the project. And it, it's much more, it's much more nicely detailed and articulated than a lot of the projects that have come before us in the past. And so, you know, I, I I find it hard to, to, to challenge this project then to go, go further when there are other projects that, you know, we, we have accepted and for whatever reason. And and I, I, I just, I, I think that it's well articulated. And, and I can make the findings for the design review. Thanks.
Can I just make one last point before, before you end?
Um, let me reopen the public hearing. Go ahead.
Yeah, I um, I just, I'd like to just say that we are not, um, uh, you know, we're not even, we're a one foot six away from the setback on the far left side of the property. And I think that helps. Um, instead of just doing, you know, standard, standard, you know, building design and then doing like a four, five or a 612 pitch. Uh, I, I, I think the articulation works well. It's a narrower house. It's not a fat, you know, four foot to four foot, you know, side setbacks kind of house. We're, we're giving a little bit of breathing room, which, which, which should help and should give me the extra to, to do something cool with the roof, give a little bit more of a pitch to it. And it is a English-style house um, that we're trying to do. And um, that would be my comments. You know, as a, as a response to some of your comments about the massing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to, unless the commissioners have any direct questions or comments to the applicant here, I'm going to close the public hearing again. Okay, so I'm closing the public hearing. Commissioner Sargent?
Um, I move, uh, we bring this back on the action calendar when the applicant has had a chance to consider our comments.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Sargent, seconded by Vice Chair Toronas. Are there any, uh, is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, we'll move to a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Goll?
Uh, nay.
Commissioner Sargent?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Chair Toronas?
Aye.
Chairs say?
Aye. So the motion passes four, one, one, one. Uh, this action is not appealable. Moving on to agenda much. Thank you. Good evening. Moving on to agenda item nine B, 112 Costa Rica Avenue. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? Record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. May we have a staff report, please?
This is an application for a design review and special permit for a new two-story, single-family dwelling with an attached garage at 112 Costa Rica Avenue, Zoned R1. The proposed project complies with all zoning code requirements. However, an application for a special permit for an attached garage is required. This project includes building a new detached 542 square foot ADU at the rear of the site. Review of the ADU application is administrative only and therefore is not reviewed by the planning commission. Staff has determined that the ADU complies with the recently adopted ADU ordinance. This concludes the summary of the staff report. I'd be happy to take questions of staff.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Um, seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. With the applicant, please step forward, state your name and add anything that you would like regarding your project.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay. Alex Motta Zavi here.
The project is a modern design. I have kept it mostly wood-looking in front, so it's not super modern, even though it is. It's very warm. The garage doors are wood-looking. And any portion that is stucco is dark gray, which kind of blends in. The two adjacent neighbors have supported this project, which is great. And half of the building is two-story and the other half of the yard is one-story tall. I'm open to your comments and your questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, I'm looking for the elevation now, but you said the garage doors are wood-looking.
Yes.
Meaning, material are they?
It's, it's wood. We, sometimes for garage door, we, we look for alternatives like metal. There are metals now that looks like wood, but, but on the elevation, what we're proposing right now is wood finish, dark brown stained. And is item number three, and is detailed on the elevation. All our elevations are very well detailed and he has all the information. And the dark line that you see is a strip of glass. I've designed one home in Las Altos that I've used that, and it looks really beautiful. It's a smoked glass inserted between the woods.
Okay, so then, as a, well, as a comment, I would see that you'd maybe want to update note number three, that it actually does say wood, because at the moment it doesn't. And that leaves us open for interpretation downstream.
Yes, sure.
I have a question. So you note, I think it's a finish number one, is a tile, wood look tile. Can you explain a little bit more about that? Material?
I'm sure you have seen in the tile shops that there are six by 48 tile that it looks like hardwood floor. It's very fashionable now for the interior finishes. It, when we glue the tile on the, on the stucco, it kind of makes it, makes the life of this building quite long, because it has no maintenance. It doesn't need, it's not like a cedar finish that you have to keep sanding and refinishing and every few years. And if the owners fail to do that, it, it will look awful. So using this material, it will make it permanent. It's easy to clean. You can hose it down. It's more expensive to do it, but it would 100% look like it would, as you see it in a tile stores that is like hardwood floor.
Would you be able to provide a sample for us to see? Is it like a porcelain tile?
Yes, it is.
So what I've seen in a lot of the faux wood porcelain tiles is there's a sheen to them. And, and not to say that a wood finish material may not have, you know, could have a sheen or to the, to the sealant and the stain, but the reflective quality of porcelain tile faux wood product is what I would like to take a look at. So would you be able to provide an actual sample of the product?
Sure.
Or maybe a materials board overall? And then my next question is about the stone tile. I think that's item number two. Is that a natural stone finish that will be cladding the?
Yes, it would be matte and is a stone, yes.
And your trans, your transition detail, I'm assuming would be a mitered?
Yes. Actually, there is, there is another method that, you know, is a 90 degree and is a very nice detail. I've used that. It's a two-stone, the inner edge touches and gives you a nice little notch at that corner, which is a very nice shadow line. So most likely, we will do that instead of a typical miter.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Sure.
Um, I don't see any of the comments from the commissioners. Oh, yes, spoke too soon. Commissioner Schmidt?
Sorry, I was just trying to find my hand.
No problem.
So going back then to the tile, number one. How do you see the joints working on that horizontally when they're, you know, four foot long? Everything kind of, as I look at the drawing and rendering, looks, you know, very linear and has a, has a much longer look to it. So how do you see the horizontal joints versus the vertical joints and how they come back together, working?
Well, it's a very good, good question. I did, I did a project in Laguna Beach that I did it this way. Anything vertical would be butt joint, so it would be pretty much not recognizable. And anything horizontal will have a quarter inch gap to delineate the line that it gives you that horizontal look. So you're not going to see the vertical look. You're going to see, we emphasize the horizontal look with the, with the grout line.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Sargent? Commissioner Sargent, you may be muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant to lower my hand. I don't have a question at this point.
Okay. Then, would anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Uh, yes, Elliot Margulies?
Hi there. Yes, my name's Elliot Margulies. I'm a property owner on 113 Crescent, which is the backside of, of 112 Costa Rica. I, forgive me, I'm new to this process and I just found out about the designs here. I want to congratulate our neighbors. It's, it looks like a really beautiful, modern design, and I'd like to be able to discuss with their plans a little bit more. I don't know quite how to do this. There are several concerns that I had when I looked at it, and I was hoping to get them documented and you can tell me how to move forward. Number one, there's a new ADU being built four feet from the, from our back property line. I was wondering if there's a way to have requests to see what the new residence looks like from the perspective of our, of our property, given, given that it's going to be a new structure. I also wanted to point out that we've carried several water drainage and erosion issues from that property onto ours over the last several years. And I was wondering how that might be addressed with this new design. We also, just curious about how noise from a new pool would be addressed. And then it also looks like the fence that they've proposed to divide our two properties is actually being proposed to be erected on our side of the property line. In addition, that new fence is actually going to block our ability from getting and doing any sort of maintenance on the backside of the garage that is up against that property line. And then finally, in our, in our neighborhood, we've seen a number of large old-growth trees from neighboring properties have to get taken down, and none of them have been revived or replaced. I think one of them was on, on their property or nearby property. I was wondering how that might be addressed, given that the new landscaping looks like it, it takes away a lot of grass or, or dirt area, and it's just a lot of patio area. But overall, I mean, I can tell, obviously, it's, it's going to be a beautiful house, but it'd be great to see how these types of things could be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruben, would you like to address, I, I think that this would be, these items that you've noted so clearly can be addressed with the applicant directly, and staff can provide some guidance to the applicant. Would that be true, Ruben?
Yes, I would encourage you to reach out to the project planner, or if you'd like, you can chat me your email address. And then I can put you in contact with the project planner. I would also encourage you and the applicant to also meet together. I think some of these items can be addressed between, to you, before the, before the next meeting. But yeah, if you want to share your email address, I can forward that to the project planner, and then you guys can talk about some of those.
Happy to do that. That sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Or questions? Okay, seeing, do we have any emails or chats?
There were no emails submitted on this and no chats.
All right. With that, then I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments? Vice Chair Toronis?
Yeah, um, well, typically, you know, when we have applications like this before us, you know, that are, that are somewhat different than what's there in the neighborhood, we look fairly closely, which is, is common. That's what we're required to do. I think we have an experienced applicant, though, in looking at this modern design, what I, as I've said before, what I commonly ask myself is, regardless of the style, regardless of the, the type of architecture that is being presented, does it look and feel residential? Even if it's different than what's in the neighborhood, fit as a residential project? And, and I think it does. You know, I think it's, you know, it's, it's definitely going to be very different than what's there, but the existing neighborhood is, is somewhat eclectic, fairly traditional, but, but eclectic. You know, and I think based on the experience of this, the architect and Alex's work that, that he's done, and some of the details that he's explained, I think it's, it's going to be finely detailed. So the, I, I can, I can support the project the way that it's presented. The only things before us are design review and a special permit for an attached garage. There are other, other properties in the neighborhood that do have attached garages. Not, may not be the dominant characteristic. You know, but I, I think that, being that they're putting an ADU, which I think also helps in terms of supporting our, our, our housing needs in the back of the property, I think bringing the garage forward is supportable, particularly with this type of architecture, the way that the garage is kind of subdued relative to the rest of the structure. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yeah, I too, you know, it is definitely different, but I, I think that overall, the scale looks nice. I think the detailing looks nice. And the question is, which one is going to be the first in the neighborhood? And so if we continue to say, no, we can't have any modern, then we will never have it. But I think that this is a fine project. So I too, you know, noticed the same things that Commissioner or Vice Chair Toronos noticed with the garages. I can support that. My one comment that I kind of noticed as I was listening to your neighbor speak about the back, but also the side neighbor has a rather large tree that looks like it's going to cover three-quarters of the pool. So something to consider how big that tree is and that impact on that site location there. But otherwise, I could support this project.
Commissioner Camerato?
Yeah, so I too really like the design, and we do have other moderns in the neighborhood. We have two right around the corner on Bariolay. One is next door to me. And then the other one is just right up the street, which is a single-story modern that was approved at staff level. And, you know, this is, we also have a mixture of modern on a, a traditional home on Pepper. So there are moderns coming up in Burlingame Park, and I think the applicant has done a really nice job in the design of this. He's done some beautiful work in town and know his, the quality of the work that he's done. I do ask that you please reach out to the neighbors on that property line, make sure that the fence issue has been resolved. And I could also see supporting this project.
So I will add to that I agree with my fellow commissioners on a very nicely designed home. I would like to see a materials board the next time we see you. And I found it interesting in trying to, because the house is very different looking, obviously. It's a modern design in a fairly traditional neighborhood, but when I looked at, there's a home almost immediately opposite this, this address and studied the massing of this proposed house, and it's nearly identical in terms of the massing. Sure, it has a different type of roof profile, but I did find it interesting that, that from a massing perspective, they're very similar. Two things I also want to note is that I appreciate that the garage, though it's attached and visible from the front, is, is rather subdued and separated into two separate doors, which is better than, you know, one very frontal two-car garage door. And the other thing I wanted to commend you on too is the, the location of the swimming pool in that it is oriented towards the backyards of the Bariolay neighbors as opposed to kind of tucked to the very back of this property. So I think it's, it's, from a noise level, it's directed more towards the backyards of those homes that are perpendicular to, to this property on Bariolay. But I think it would be a very nice addition to the neighborhood, and I could see supporting this project. Are there any further comments? So Vice Chair Toronis?
I'll make a motion to bring this back on regular action.
I'll second that motion. So we have a motion by Vice Chair Toronis, seconded by myself, Audrey Say, Commissioner Say. Also Audrey Say. And, and is there any discussion on this motion? Before we go to a roll call vote? All right, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Camerato?
Aye.
Commissioner Gall?
Aye.
Commissioner Sargent?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Vice Chair Toronis?
Aye.
Chair Say.
Aye. So the motion passes 6001. This action is not appealable. And we move on to agenda item, let's see, sorry, 9C, 912 Linden Avenue. For any commissioners not able to visit the project site, or do any commissioners want to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? Please note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. May we have a staff report, please?
This is an application for design review, special permit, and front setback variance for a new two-story, single-family dwelling and attached garage at 912 Linden Avenue, Zoned R1. The proposed project complies with all zoning requirements, with the exception of the requested front setback variance for the attached garage. Planning staff would note that the minimum required front setback for a two-car garage with one double-wide doors, 35 feet. The proposed project, sorry, the proposed plan show that the attached garage is setback 18 feet, where 16 feet, four inches is the block. However, staff notes that the attached garage will need to be set back an additional two feet to 20 feet in order to accommodate an uncovered parking space in the driveway. This was an oversight by planning staff. We measured to the inner edge of the sidewalk rather than the front property line. Measuring to the inner edge.
How do I leave the meeting?
Allowed.
Please mute your, your microphone, please, if you are not speaking. Thank you.
As I mentioned, this was an oversight by planning staff. Measuring to the inner edge of the sidewalk is allowed for additions, not for new homes. The applicant has agreed to move the house and the garage an additional two feet back so that a 20-foot parking space length is provided in the driveway. And I believe you received, I received after mail as well as a letter from the applicant stating so. This project includes building a new detached ADU in the rear yard. Again, review of the ADU is administrative only and not reviewed by the planning commission. Staff reviewed the ADU and it does comply with the ADU ordinance. This concludes my summary of the staff report, and I can take questions if you have any for staff.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Gall?
Yeah, Ruben, I don't recall ever seeing before that the garage had a 35-foot front setback.
Right, so. Yeah, so we.
Yeah, so we.
Go ahead.
Sorry. We have different front setback requirements for attached garages specifically. And it depends on whether it has one double wide garage door or two single wide doors. So for one double wide door as is proposed currently, it's thirty-five feet minimum. If you do two single wide doors, the minimum required setback is twenty-five feet. Or you could stagger the two single wide doors, one at twenty and one at twenty-five.
Okay, so it has to do with the width of the door?
Has to do with the width of the door.
Okay.
That is to, to minimize its kind of in the front elevation.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing with the applicant. Please step forward, state your name and add anything that you would like regarding your project.
Yes, hi, Commissioners. This is Chris Ruffat. I represent RDS and along with the Templeton Holdings owner, Melinda Cow. She's also available, excuse me, for, for any, just any questions. Basically, what's driving this proposal, number one is the front-facing garage. We feel that most houses in that neighborhood have the, the garage placement in the front of the, the lot. Also, the if we were to do any kind of a detached garage in the back of the property, it would really disallow us to have the ADU that we're proposing in the back of the lot. So those are pretty much the, the deciding criteria on, on the design of this house. We wanted to try to keep it simple. The neighborhood is up and coming, of course, so we wanted to keep our material simple. And yet understated and elegant or color palette, if you will. Well, we're, we're wishing to blend in with the surrounding homes. There is a couple of, actually one newer home across the street. It's got some, some modern materials, but we wanted to keep ours more and eliminate any kind of a woodsy look. So we try to keep it simple. Simple grinning on the windows, simple details and that's pretty much all I have to say at this point. So I'll be open, well, I'll, I'll turn it over to Melinda if she's got any additional comments that she wants to lend.
Thank you, Commissioners, but yeah, we, we wanted to keep this home to blend in with the neighborhood, keep it simple and adding that ADU in the back and allowing us to have the front two, one car garage to blend in also with that street. And we're open to any comments that you have. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Vice Chair Toronis?
Yeah, Chris, just a, a couple of questions. You know, I, I think that the project is, is nicely articulated. It's, the massing is nice, you know, I don't have too many issues in terms of the designer view. In terms of the special permit for an attached garage, I think this is probably one of those unique situations where if you actually proposed a detached garage, it would be, it would be so unique. I think every, actually every house on that block is, is an attached garage from what I could tell driving through the neighborhood. So I think, I think. But in terms of the variance, it's where I'm having some, a little bit of difficulty. Because the existing attached garage, correct me if I'm wrong, but in looking at the survey and the staff report, it's set back about twenty-four feet. Right? Existing, existing garage, existing house.
I don't have a survey right in front of me, but if that's numbers that you're mentioning, that, that may be the case.
Yeah, I thought I saw it in the staff report and I just scaled off the survey and it looks like it's at about twenty-four feet or so. So you're actually pulling the attached garage forward. You know, it's, it's.
A, a bit, yes, we would be pulling it a bit with the adjustment for the twenty-foot mark. Then we would be pulling it forward four feet if, if twenty foot was the mark. Like I said, I don't have the survey right in front of me.
Okay. Well, one question.
Relying on your judgment there.
Okay, well. Regardless, you're, you're pulling it forward. I, I guess, you know, I, I could have, I could have more support for the variance if you were putting an attached garage back in the existing, existing location. You know, but what's tripping the variance is the fact that you've got the real broad garage door. You know, that sort of screams, you know, homage to, to car. And the reason for the increased setback for the two-car garage door is again, to minimize that sort of, of car forward house towards the front of the property. So did, my question is, did you look at any other articulation of that garage door? Maybe doing a double garage door like, like Ruben was, was mentioning? Or any other possibilities? Every other, every other attached garage that I could see in that neighborhood was a single garage door that's fairly subdued, even if it is close to the property line.
Originally, we started out with a single garage configuration with a setback along the left-hand side. I could see how we could articulate the garage door in a more effective manner by proposing a two-door look, if you will. But we'd really like to maintain that extra garage space for potentially in-home office, in-home unit of some sort, being that we're only proposing a one-car garage. So we did look at a one-car garage at one time, but then we, we reverted back to the two-car in answer to your question.
Well, I'm just having, I'm having a hard time making those findings for the exceptional or extraordinary circumstances that, you know, would cause us to have to, to accept the garage coming that much more forward and now becoming a two-car garage, you know, double wide door. So otherwise, you know, I could make the other findings for the project and find it supportable, but I'm just kind of hung up on that, the variance.
We, we, we can definitely look at setting the garage or the house itself an additional, basically set the garage to the, the point where the existing garage is currently. We still have room in the back to manipulate the, the back patio to coincide with that adjustment. So then therefore we'd be adding an additional four feet to the proposed twenty feet. So to make it twenty-four or at least to the level to where the garage door is currently.
Okay, well, like I said, in my mind, and I'm just one voice, but in my mind, you know, if you're applying for a variance and you're, you're, you're going to the, the line of the existing, you know, I find that a little bit more supportable, even if it does still trip a variance, but that's just me. Let other commissioners chime in at this point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goll?
Yeah, you know, that's the only sticking point that I have as well. And, you know, if, if the, if the requirement for the setback is tied to the width of the garage door, I don't think you would need to necessarily change the size of the garage, although I would like to see it's pushed back a little bit further, as Commissioner Toronto said. But you could maybe do something to modify the front so that the garage door wasn't as wide. You're only required to have one car garage, but you could keep it, if I'm not mistaken, you could keep it the same size if you just decrease the size of the door and maybe put a window or change the front a little bit so it stepped forward or offset from, from the, the plane of the garage door.
Thinking, that's what I'm thinking of articulating it to a single and then even just having a break along that plane would, would give us a little bit more play there.
Right, and then you still have the room inside the garage, which I completely get because that's, you know, that's, everybody wants a little bit more space. But I, I do also appreciate that you're, you know, I mean, I, I can support the, the attached garage because that is the predominant method of putting the garage on the lot on this, on this block. But I also appreciate that you're not going back and getting into that, I'll call it a small grove of redwood trees between your neighbor's house and this house. I appreciate that you're keeping that one redwood tree back.
That was, yeah, that was a tough decision. That, that was also weighing heavily on the rear, single car garage on the left-hand side as well.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's great that you kept those trees. It's because when I walked in the backyard, it's kind of, it makes it really nice back there. So, but if you just look at that garage, I think we can probably move this thing forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yeah. When I was there yesterday, your neighbor, the neighbor next door was parked in his driveway with his truck halfway into the sidewalk because he does only have twenty feet. And so I, I too, I don't think I could support the attached garage only at twenty feet. I, I would like to see it back to where the line of the garage is now. And if that were the case, then the fact that it's a double doesn't bother me or, or that it's attached. But I think that to continue to do a short driveway and have more people interrupting the sidewalks doesn't add value to the neighborhood. But otherwise, I, I'm in support of the, the design and the materials and everything. It all looks good to me.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yeah, I like the project and I agree with what's been said so far about moving the garage back. I, I would have a preference of looking at the a pair of double doors instead of the larger single door. I think that would fit better with the neighborhood. So. But overall, I like the project.
Commissioner Camerado?
I am in agreement with my fellow commissioners. Just change up that garage and I think we're good to go.
And I too agree with my fellow commissioners and all the comments that have been made thus far. I'm noticing on a couple of your other elevations that there are some corbels, corbel details that have been added under the roof lines and wanted to see some at the front as well, where they would actually be more viewed than on the side or even the rear. So just a comment about considering that.
Yes, we, I did have some corbels there, but we wanted a bit, a bit more clean look on the front, less woodsy. So just kind of kept them on the other elevations to kind of get some, get some opinions.
Okay. I, it adds a little bit more character to that, to that top gable and then especially also that, the gable over the front door.
Yeah, you know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind doing them over the window. I'm not sure if I'd add it on the, on the little porch. It's, might be a little bit too busy. That's, that was one of the, the owner's comments.
Maybe just one in the middle? I don't know. I'll let you decide. But just noticing that you had that detail around the other sides and it seemed like it wanted to be on the front, too.
Yeah, I, I could definitely have that discussion with the owners.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have any emails or?
Hi, sorry, we're the neighbors at nine sixteen Linden. And so I just wanted to see if there's any information on construction, when it will begin and how long it would last, if there's any approximations at this time.
Oh, you're asking me?
I think you're the person to best know.
I mean, with, with permitting, I mean, we're, we're in, in December. I'm not sure when staff would meet again on this project, probably in January, hopefully. Construction plans will need to be laid out. I'm, I'm thinking probably the soonest permits might be available, maybe on the short end, maybe June.
Okay.
July-ish. And we definitely would wish not to be held to those dates, but it just really depends how the permitting goes along and goes forward. And, and that's usually the, excuse me, and that's usually the governing criteria is permitting, pulling permits, lining up contractors, et cetera.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the public? Right. Seeing, oh, I guess seeing none. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments? Commissioner, Vice Chair Toronis?
Well, as has been stated, I, I think it, it's a fairly nice project and generally supportable. I think it's really just comes down to the issue of the variance. So if they can readdress that and make revisions and, and some other considerations, as we've discussed, I think that the project can come back before action, or for action.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yeah, I would agree and make that motion to bring it back on the action calendar.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Sargent, seconded by Vice Chair Toronis. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yeah, we have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Camerado?
Aye.
Commissioner Goll?
Aye.
Commissioner Sargent?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Vice Chair Toronis? Chair Say.
Aye. Motion passes six, zero, zero, one. This action is not appealable.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening to you, too. Moving on to agenda item number ten, Commissioners' reports. There are no Commissioners' reports tonight. So we move on to agenda item number eleven, Directors' reports.
Sure, the only thing I have for you tonight is two FYIs. One at twenty-nine Humboldt Road and the other at one thirty-seven Costa Rica. Please let us know or let me know if you wish to call any of these up for review for further discussion.
Like, that would be a no.
Right.
So I, and is there anything else you need to report to us about from the city council meeting on December seventh?
I don't recall. I don't think there's anything substantive regarding planning issues. There is no second planning commission meeting in December, so as they say, we will see you all next year. And sorry, what was that?
Alex Mordazavi ever able to leave the meeting?
I was certain to think he enjoyed it so much. I think he did. Right.
So, thank you, everybody. Oh, I see Santa climbing down the ladder behind of Sandy. So cute. Have wonderful holidays, everybody, and we'll see you next year. I'm going to adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-eight PM. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Happy New Year.